This is the open workshop for Bayonne Board of Education, January 30th, 2019. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonso.
President.
Trustee Saeed.
Here.
Trustee Crute. Trustee Finnegan is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Wine.
Here.
Trustee Bellato.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
President Robert.
Here.
And it is 5:07. As I explained in our communications, we have three presentations tonight to assist you in your superintendent search. Our first presentation will be by HYA. Mr. Dwight Fennig is here tonight, and I'll have him introduce his colleagues. I'd like to just read a brief statement, I guess to set some sort of ground rules. Based on advisory opinions published by the School Ethics Commission, those board members who may be conflicted from participating in the superintendent's search cannot participate in any public or executive sessions regarding this process. But obviously, you are allowed to sit in on certain parts of the process. Okay? So that's why we're making the presentations for the full board. So at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dwight Fennig, and we'll proceed. Thank you, Dwight. Do I have to do anything with the microphone?
Sounds good. You're good.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having us on this wonderful afternoon. It was interesting getting here. We have a third colleague, Eugenia Lawson, who will not be here because she got caught in the squall somewhere between Toms River and Newark Airport and decided to turn around. My name is Dwight Fennig. I work for HYA. I also have a great deal of experience in public education, most of which was done in New Jersey. My partner is Milton James. He's also with me this evening. He has a great deal of experience. Between us, we figured out we have over 80 years' experience, and if you add Eugenia in there, well, we could go over 100. We've been building-level administrators, and we've been district-level administrators. I was a superintendent in four districts in New Jersey, or three districts in New Jersey: North Plainfield, Maristown, and also Keyport. I was the deputy commissioner under Commissioner Bill LeBraro when he was in Trenton. Also, when I left there, I went out to Pocono Mountain, where Milk joined me for a short stint. I was out there for six years. Since then, I've been doing searches for HYA and did a little bit of work for SUNY Cortlandt. We do have our resumes and background in there, so we're not going to spend a lot of time on us but talk more about the process so we have time to answer your questions. The most recent searches I've been involved in in New Jersey, currently involved in Berkeley Heights, New Jersey. We did Newark in the spring and summer. I was on that team. Also in the past, did Warren Township. I've done places like Stanford, Connecticut, Providence, Rhode Island, places as small as 1,200 and as large as 65,000. So we have a great deal of experience to offer you. Between Milk, myself, and Eugenia Lawson, we've hired a number of employees over the year, working for both ourselves and school districts, as well as for the State Department of Education. If you look, we have handed out the PowerPoint that we will leave a copy of if you need to have that. Everyone should have a copy, and it talks a little bit about HYA. And, you know, the beginning point, and I'm on the second page now, that great school leaders focus on what matters. We think it's important to kind of focus on the theme of Bayonne as close to it as we could get from your website, moving from good to great. And that speaks to a lot of the work, you know, we do as search consultants, looking all across the country for people to perhaps come to Bayonne, or looking in a tri-state area. Our executive searches are in excess of 1,300 now with HYA. We probably have 150 associates nationwide. And you might say, you know, why is that important? Well, it's important for recruiting purposes. We don't run people through the mill. We don't run stables where we say, it's now your turn to be the superintendent and this district can keep moving people around. We depend a lot on recruiting, as well as advertising that we have on our own sites, as well as the sites you may want to use when you move forward. And then we have a, we do have a back office staff that helps us work through a lot of these things. They're located in Schaumburg, Illinois, which is right outside of Chicago. I've never been to Schaumburg. I'm not going there, especially this week. And I think, you know, that, you know, they do support us greatly nationwide. You know, we have a national reach, but we have a local focus, because all of our associates that I've worked with are in a tri-state area, and we can focus on New Jersey, and New York, Connecticut, and those places. And yet, we can reach out to people in other places to see if they know candidates who might be highly qualified to come to Bayonne. We think that community engagement's an important part of what we do. We run focus groups. We'll talk a little bit about that process on the process slide. But when we run focus groups, you identify the groups with whom you'd like us to speak, and we take a lot of time, spend time with them, and develop a product which we call the Leadership Profile. The Leadership Profile guides the search. It'll have some background material with an executive summary on what are the most important topics that the community and the board, and also the staff, would like to deal with in terms of the superintendent's search. When we do the focus groups, we ask three questions. We don't go through a myriad of questions. We say, number one, what do you think are the most outstanding points about the Bayonne School District? What do you like about it? And also, the community? And what would you like to see continue? Number two, what are the challenges faced by the school district in the long and short term? And, you know, how you think you might try to address them? And then, number three, what are the characteristics you'd like to see in the new superintendent? And while these may seem like, you know, easy things to answer, when you deal with the focus groups, you find out two things. Number one, there's a lot of commonality in themes, but also, there's a lot of differentiation depending on the groups, and you bring it together in the end, and what's the Leadership Profile? Also contributing to the Leadership Profile is a survey that would be put online for your community to fill out, or anyone else within the district. You get to pick six groups with whom you'd like to, well, you, from whom you would gather information. Usually, it's the parents of students who attend the schools, and then other community members, and then administrators, teachers, and students. We do emphasize student input, because we think it's important in a school district. We've talked to eighth graders, most times, and high school students about that, so that when we get their input and find out, you know, what would they like to see in the leadership that's going to kind of guide them through the beginning of this century, and it's not even the beginning anymore, we're getting in there, but also, you know, how they're going to be better prepared for the future. If you look at that, I think it's the third page or the fourth page, the process, the signature search process, fancy name, but you see everything that we do down on that page. We begin the process by a meeting for a presentation like tonight, then a planning meeting with the board. And we sit down at the planning meeting, and we decide who the focus groups are going to be, what the search calendar's going to look like, and how we're going to get our work completed with your assistance. And then, you know, we talk about bringing back that Leadership Profile to the board, and we say, these are the kinds of people we're going to look for that have demonstrated these kinds of activities in educational leadership and have these kinds of characteristics. The key word for us is always demonstrated, because it's easy to say you can research things, it's easy to say you can put programs in place. But, you know, we want to make sure that people have shown what they can do. You know, superintendents get mad at me because I say no superintendent alone is ever responsible for test scores. It takes an entire program, it takes a process, and it takes buy-in by everybody. However, the superintendent's most important in setting the tone for those kinds of things. And when you talk about test scores, and strategic planning, and all of those things, the superintendent plays a key role. It talks about the phases over the next couple of pages of the PowerPoint. The engagement phase, that's when we do the survey. We conduct the screening interviews for you. You know, you're going to have up to, for instance, in Newark, we had about 60 applicants, all right? There will be a certain percentage of applicants who apply for every job in the country. So we know that they may not be quite viable, you know, for your setting. And then there are those who are highly qualified, and we will do screening interviews and bring you a slate of candidates from whom you can choose to interview. That slate is usually eight to 10 people. If you want it to be 12, it'll be 12. If you want it to be lower, it'll be lower. If you wanted to review some of the people we did not refer for screening, we would do that confidentially until you decided. We would tell you about their position, their experience, and things of that nature. And if you decided you wanted to see them, then we'd make that arrangement to see their credentials. Then you would move forward from that slate and narrow the field. Usually, the narrowing process takes two or three interviews with the board, and then whatever other interface you'd like to have, be that public interface or whatever. We could talk about that at the planning meeting. In the recruitment phase, we advertise, we do the proactive recruitment, we have a national page. We not only feature our own searches, we put the searches on from every search company in the nation. So when people are coming to our page, they get to see what we have. And we do that screening and that initial reference check. We present the slate. We help you facilitate the interviews. We help you with questions to develop. We're here with you for debriefing after the interviews. And then we perform the background checks as much as we can up till the finalist stage. Now, when you get to the finalist stage, we have used a backend company called Baker U. Banks that does an in-depth, really, a vetting of candidates. And they will go into social media, news media, credentialing from all the major universities in the country, and you can get into almost like a credit check piece. You certainly want to have someone who is a, has financial acumen running your district, not someone who may be in court over several issues dealing with finances. So those are the kinds of checks they would do if you choose to use them in the end, and we suggest that you do, especially for the finalists. Transitional phase, I'm not going to talk about that. I'm a terrible salesman for the company, and I'm not talking anything about except the search tonight. If you want to engage us in a transitional phase, that's fine. We could talk about that at a later date. Now, I've gone through this quickly, because I wanted you to be able to, or hopefully, answer your questions based on the information we have presented you with tonight.
I have a question. You said the final stage. What would be the average number of interviews that you might go through for the average individual going into the final stage?
Going to the final stage, usually three. Usually three, and there might be a fourth one. It depends on how you want that final engagement to be. Usually, the board will have an initial interview with candidates, and that's usually kind of standard questions for all of them, to narrow it. Second interview, you kind of zero in on the things you may have heard from them in the first interview that you want to have clarified, or need more information about. The third one, you might invite in a couple of other people from the public, because we like to try to keep the process as confidential as possible. You might invite other people in to assist you.
Can I interrupt one second? If you remember my statement before, if you're conflicted and not able to serve on the search committee, you really can't participate in asking questions during any of these presentations. So I'm just going to remind everybody of that, but I'm sure somebody else would have asked that question.
I was just about to say.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. And we've dealt with conflicted board members before in terms of how to go through the process. I think North Plainfield was the most difficult, because they had a seven-member board, and four members were conflicted. So, but we got through the process. In any event, you know, we feel that that, you know, that background check is important, and, you know, that you will make a decision when you get to that third session of questioning as to who you want to participate. You know, we don't want anyone ever to think it's a public decision. It's a board decision. You can have public involvement. We think that's important. But it's a board decision in the end on who you select as superintendent.
I don't know if you can answer this for confidentiality reasons, but can you give us a list of high-performing districts that you've worked with in a state of New Jersey?
High-performing districts in New Jersey?
Yeah, to give us an idea of the type of successful endeavors you've had with districts.
Warren Hills, K.A., Berkeley Heights currently, Wauchung Regional High School.
So on your website, you work with the Princeton Public Schools?
Oh, yeah. HYA did. HYA worked with Princeton. Right. That wasn't me in particular. Yeah. There are others that HYA worked with.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're in a good timeline right now to start this search, and shouldn't be any kind of rush to it, or, I'm looking at your timeline. It seems like we're in pretty good stead here as far as starting right now.
Well, trying to dig that out here where I have that.
Page six is what I see.
Yeah. I drew that up. Obviously, it's an estimated search timeline. You're in a tough timeline right now, all right? I don't pull punches. You're in a tough timeline right now, because a lot of searches have already begun, and they are in interviewing stages or post-interviewing stages with the board. So you're a little behind what might be considered a normal swing. Some start just before the holidays, some right after. This timeline can be met if you keep the calendar dates. The most difficult thing to do is once you have a planning meeting, is sticking to the calendar. And that's not easy for any board, you know, because you have a lot of dates to do things you normally do. And on a couple of these items, like when you talk about a slate of candidates, or you talk about interviewing candidates, you really shouldn't be doing anything else that night. So that's what becomes tough on the calendar. This is what I would consider to be a pretty aggressive timeline, and I think that timeline can be met if the calendar is stuck to once the final dates are reached. A little behind on the start of the process in terms of what districts are doing, you know, kind of like on the East Coast, I would say, that I'm familiar with. Yes?
In your timeline, it says June 30th, says Board Search Committee conducts site visits.
Yeah.
Are you talking about site visits to where the current, well, the applicant is serving as superintendent or somewhere?
Right. Well, actually, it could be both. But, you know, site visits used to be a commonality in all searches. Some board members might go to that, to that particular venue where the person is serving. Now, you know, others have said as a board that, you know, that's just kind of like a dog and pony show, I really don't want to do that. But, you know, it also tells you something about the administrator, if you want to pursue that, about how they set it up, who you want to see. And obviously, you've gotten down to the end where you want to make a final decision. Not every board does that. More frequently than not, in the recent past, for me, boards have chosen not to do that. So that's kind of interesting. You can have finalists do a site visit here, but then you run that risk of confidentiality. And the risk does get, you know, stronger near the end. If you have two or three candidates that you want to have come through your site, obviously, you know, it becomes, it's no secret once that happens. We like to try to keep confidentiality as far along as possible, especially in the beginning processes, because when you recruit, sometimes we're making cold calls. People have not even expected to apply for positions, and we're saying, don't you think this would be a good idea to go to Bayonne? And this is what it offers. Take a look at the Leadership Profile. So we try to keep it as confidential as far down the line as possible. Other states, you can't do that at all. Can't do that in Massachusetts, can't do that in Florida. You know, you have to be out in the open with all the candidates right in the beginning. So we'd like to try to keep it confidential. We think it enriches the candidate pool.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments? Questions? No?
Comment. Can I make a comment? Of course.
Unfortunately, no.
All right. Thank you.
We know that you have, you know, you've gotten our proposal. You can see our pricing on there. After questions about the pricing and how that works, we'd be pleased to, you know, talk to you again about that. We are thankful for the opportunity this evening and look forward to hearing from you soon.
Great.
We think this would be a great opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustees, our, our next presentation is here, so we'll start a few minutes early. In the meantime, I'll go hand out some more handouts. Now, this is the Education Service Commission of New Jersey, and with us tonight, we've got Mr. Thomas Alata.
Thank you.
And Tom, you're welcome to step up to the microphone.
Thank you.
Anything else you need, you let me know.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Thomas Jalen Allen. I'm the point person, the consultant for the Educational Service Commission of New Jersey. I don't know if you're familiar with the Service Commission, but there are usually some type of Service Commission in each county, but the Educational Service Commission of New Jersey has spread out from Middlesex County into North Jersey primarily, and now into South Jersey a little bit, providing different services for the public school districts. My role with them is that I'm the point person, like I said, the consultant that handles their, most of their superintendent searches. In the packet that I gave you, there's, my resume is in there. You see my background. I have 44 years in K-12 education. As a teacher, an administrator, a coach, many times coaching up here in Bayonne against Donnie Ahern when he was here many years ago. Spent a lot of time in that stadium over there, either watching or coaching. But came up here or developed as a building administrator. I was the last 11 years before I retired, was the superintendent in the Jackson School District in Ocean County. Tried to change careers and was not successful. Handled about four interim positions in Toms River, South Plainfield, East Windsor, and then finally in Warren Township. After that, now I work part-time at Ocean County College. I'm the director of School Relations, which I handle a professional development academy, created a professional development academy there, and are counseling or working with a software developer on the educational software piece. But as far as the commission goes, I've done a number of things commissioned, but handle their searches. My attitude towards searches is that I'm here to try to adjust to you. I don't come in with a set policy of how I'm going to do things. I want to sit with the board and see how you want to get out of this. Some of the things that I've done in the past is, for example, as far as community input, when I did the Haznet Board of Education, they didn't want any community input. They said that they were elected to make that decision. That's what they did. When I did Brick Township, the board wanted to do the community input. They wanted to hear directly from the people, not filter through me. When I did South Plainfield, they wanted me to handle it all. So depending on the board's feeling on that, I think community input is important, but how you want to handle it is really how I want to handle it. I don't know what your timeline is as far as hiring somebody to start. I'm assuming it's July 1st, so then we need a quick timeline, and hopefully, you'll make a decision on whoever you choose soon, because that's going to be, if we're looking for an extensive search outside of the state and within the state, it's going to take some time. And then you're always faced with that job of whoever is leaving another district, if they're an outsider, either has a 60, 90, or 120-day clause in their contract. So that waiting period is always added on to whenever we hire that person. So it could be extensive as far as the time goes, but I don't think it's something impossible, but it's going to be an accelerated timeline for sure. What I do is, is I, after we advertise, we agree on the advertisement, we send it out there, we collect the resumes. You see all the resumes that apply. What I try to do is put them into three buckets. A bucket that meets your expectations, a bucket that won't meet your expectations, and maybe a bucket in the middle that you have to decide if they are somebody you want to see or not. In many cases, those top two buckets are really what you come out of, your candidates. Sometimes you agree with me, sometimes you don't. This is your search, not my search. I don't tell you who to hire. I don't tell you who to interview. That's your decision. Okay? What I try to do, and my role in this search, is to point out what I believe are some strengths and some weaknesses of each candidate. Okay? But the decision-making is yours. I'm not making that decision. Any questions?
When you say, like, we'll pick the candidates, or so, do you provide a search on those candidates?
Yes. What I'll do is, when I bring those resumes to you, I will have spoken to each candidate and done some background, the initial background check on them. Okay? As it moves along, that background check will become more extensive, but at least I will, I speak to each one, either meet with them, or speak to them on the phone, depending on the strength that I see in their candidacy, and then, like I said, do a preliminary background check for them.
On a average basis, most of the places you've done this, about how many candidates does the board actually interview?
Anywhere between six and 12. Okay? On a smaller district, depending on what the board wants to do, it was more closer to that number six. The larger districts usually want to see more people. I usually suggest that we have three rounds of interviews. That first round is more of a get-to-know-one interview session, and you find a little bit about that candidate. The second round, we try to make it a little bit different, and have that person either present, and then you see them in the public setting, and then ask them questions about some of their background presentations. And then we narrow it down to maybe two or three, and come together, and, again, try to do something different. And it has taken many different forms when we get to that third round. It could be another presentation, it could be just more pointed questions, exactly how you would handle this situation or this situation. It's really, again, how the board wants to handle that. You're on an accelerated timeframe, so we would want to compress that a little bit and make the decision-making be a little bit quicker.
And you also assist us with contract negotiations?
Yes. Yes. There's a standard boilerplate contract that NJASA and the NJDOE have agreed to. I use that as a basis. I talk to you about what your parameters are, how much, you know, with the cap, there's, with the cap and the current regulation, there's not a whole lot of negotiation going on. Starting salary, where you're going to go from there, a couple of benefit issues, but, you know, most of it is right there in the standard contract.
They don't plan on taking the cap off?
They pla, well, I've heard they're going to take it off for the last three years. It's still on. Usually, the candidate was going to want a clause mentioning something about renegotiating if the cap comes off.
Well, yeah, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The board would just give me a minute to show them. Trustees, for some of you, it's a familiar face. Mary Ann Friedman is our school board representative, school boards for Hudson County, and she is going to be handling this presentation. I'm going to help her with her handouts. Since we're running ahead of schedule, if we have any school board questions after she's done with her superintendent, we could take advantage of Mary Ann being here. We could maybe ask any questions that you might have that might be relative. Mary Ann, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Do I need, the mic isn't, oh, it is.
No, you're good with that mic.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. So I am Mary Ann Friedman. I'm your field service representative, and as you know, this will be the most important decision that you as trustees will make over the next three to five years. And it's three to five years, because your next superintendent will have a contract minimally for three years and a maximum of five years. So if you'd like to open up your packet to the first page, it really talks about the fact that this is our process, but it's your search. So our process is legally defensible, it goes through a particular process. We have four different processes that you can venture to go with us on. And because I am your field service representative, and I will be working with you, it is in my best interest that you select the best person for your district. So I will work very hard to make sure that you are using this as a selection process and not as a settling process. We assure your confidentiality of all of the candidates, which is a very, very big thing in the education industry because, or the education department, because folks that are applying for your district's superintendency are probably local to you in Hudson County or maybe neighborhood schools. And so, excuse me, they don't want their information to be released until they know that you're, they're your finalist. Think about when you're in your job, excuse me, when you're in your positions, you don't go tell your boss you're looking for another job, most likely. You're going to do that when you know you have an offer on the table. Okay? So we do have confidential secretaries and administrative assistants who work with me. We'll place your, develop an ad for you based on your criteria. We look for that criteria to be very objective and broad-based, so that you can attract the largest pool of candidates for your district. And then we handle all the materials from there on out. We use Appletrack, which is a separate, if you use Appletrack as a school district, we have a separate account, so our accounts don't mingle or mesh at all, so you wouldn't be able to go into our Appletrack account. Thank you. You wouldn't be able to go into our Appletrack account. I, myself, and then our administrative assistant, who is a confidential secretary, would be the only ones who could do that. We build all of the application materials. They all become yours. Everything that the applicant sends in to us becomes the property of the Board of Education, and the board secretary usually is the person who holds that box in a secure and confidential location once I deliver it, and then you have the opportunity to go through it. I'll rank every candidate in A, B, or C order. I'll rank every candidate in A, B, or C order. A is exceed your criteria, B is meet your criteria, and C is doesn't meet your criteria. So you would be, based on the criteria that we developed, you would be able to interview anybody who meets or exceeds your criteria. That means internal candidates as well. So if somebody doesn't meet your criteria, whether they're internal or external, you would not be able to interview them with our process. Okay? I've been with the association for 10 years and I've done multiple searches in, mostly in Middlesex, Atlantic County, Cumberland County, Cape May County, Burlington. I've kind of had lots of different areas over the state. But as of 2016, I'm yours. I'm Hudson, Middlesex, and the southern portion of Ocean. We do have additional training that we provide for you in terms of your contract, your superintendent's contract. So if somebody from our labor relations department will come in and work with you so that you can see what can be in the contract. It's more about what can't be in the contract these days because the contract is very specific and boilerplate. And that will go along with taking a look at your job description. We're always happy to look at your job description to make sure that that's up to date as well. So if you go to page five, if you turn to page five, those are the four search processes that we have. If you start at the right-hand side, you'll see that that's a basic board-assisted search. And so you're responsible for everything after I deliver the pool of candidates to you. It would be up to you then to determine who you wanted to bring in. It's always up to you to determine who you want to bring in for first round interviews. But you would need to have some, a confidential secretary that would make those, schedule those appointments for you and so on and so forth. And I can assist you going forward, but not as much as I can with the, the traditional search, which is the second from the right. And that program, again, I'll meet with community members and I'll meet with staff and take their input. We have a survey monkey tool that we use that allows everybody to participate and provide their input. Our search process does not allow community members or staff to be at the table. Only the non-conflicted members of the board are at the table making decisions about who you select as a consultant, because board members who are conflicted can't be part of any, any part of this process other than knowing what the process is. So the trustees who are not conflicted, I'll work with you all to develop the criteria, to develop a calendar. We usually work backwards on the calendar, so we take a look at when you want the person seated. I understand that Dr. Wanko is here until July 1st, June 30th. It can be done to get it done in that timeframe, but it'll be crunched. I mean, it'll really take a lot of work on the part of the non-conflicted trustees. And it can happen, but it, it will be tight. It'll be a tight schedule, but we can do that. And then I'll deliver the pool, once I deliver the pool of candidates to you, again, there'll be an A, B, C order. You'll be able to select anybody in the A or B category to come in and have an interview with. I'll provide you with sample questions in that traditional search process. You'll decide what the questions will be. I'll meet with you. I'll schedule all of the interviews. I'll meet with you before the first round of interviews and at the end of the last of the first round of interviews to process you out, make sure you're all on the same page and that we have consensus as to who to bring back, if there's anybody you would like to bring back. I then give you sample questions for second round interviews. You'll select those. I'll meet with you first before the second round of interviews, scheduling all of those interviews as well, and meet with you at the end of the second round of the interviews to process you out again, to see who, if anybody, you've selected as your next superintendent or if you'd like to go to a third round of interviews. Okay? But I'm with you every step of the way. The third to the right is a process where I'm involved in interviewing all of the A candidates before you even meet them. So before I even bring in the pool of candidates, I would meet with or have a phone conversation with each of those A candidates. Then I bring in the pool of candidates to you, and I'm also here sitting with the five trustees or the non-conflicted trustees through the entire interview process. And then the last program, all the way on the left, includes everything that I've talked about so far, but it also includes a strategic plan at the end of the process. Okay? We do a transition workshop with your new superintendent, usually about 30 to 60 days after he or she has started, to make sure that everybody's on the same page, develop some goals, develop a communication plan for each of you so that the board knows what the trustees know, what the superintendent's intentions are, and vice versa, so that everybody's on the same page and there's a clear path. Okay? I have some, some listing, the next page is the calendar. So again, we would start at the bottom. These, except you know, probably are aware that the executive county superintendent needs to sign the contract before you can appoint. So we would be looking for you to, to make that selection, if you have a July 1st start, by April 1st, so that the candidate, the, uh, the contract, excuse me, would go to the executive county superintendent for her approval. She would get that back to you by May 1st, so you could appoint your candidate. We like to leave 60 days between the appointment time and the start time because most of your candidates in a district this size would likely be assistant superintendents or superintendents, even if they're principals, depending on the criteria that you develop, would have 60 days in their con, in their contract in order to transition out of their districts. So you would have a May 1st appointment time and then for the new superintendent to start on July 1st. You also have the new legislation that you have, will have to deal with in terms of going, whoever your finalist is, going through and checking 20 years back. So usually your board attorney will do that, or if you have a personnel or a human resources department, perhaps the director will do that for you and go back to their previous employers to make sure that there haven't been any sexual abuse or child abuse allegations against them. So we have to work that into the process as well. So you can see it would be a tight, a tight fit, a tight squeeze for the calendar, but it can be done. The worst-case scenario is that you may have to appoint an interim for a month or two to get through the process. Because I'd also rather that you not rush the process, but make sure that you're selecting the best candidate for your district. You're a large district. You have a lot of great things going on here, and I'm sure you want to keep that momentum going. What questions might I ask, might I answer for you? The other thing that I just need to tell you is that advertising in the store ledger, that cost is outside of, of our search process. The, um, the advertising is always outside of the search process. Okay? Questions?
The difference between, I see, with, looking at the prices. Now, when you say you interviewed them before, now would you make a selection to us as to who we should even see or?
I'll make recommendations based on my conversations with you all in developing your criteria and, and going through questions and what your community input has been and what your staff input has been. Because those things will come back to you when I deliver the pool. All of that information that your community and your staff has provided will come back to you at that point. You'll be able to use that in the selection process. I will make recommendations as to who I think may be the best fit for you, but it's ultimately your decision and you will be free to choose anybody from the A and B category.
And with the interview process, you said you would run that at, at certain levels or, I suppose the, the community interviews are things I do for?
I do the community input sessions or the community forums and the staff forums. So I would make arrangements, usually with the business administrator or the board secretary to come in and have a room available so that, you know, we could advertise for your community members and your staff to come in. That's their opportunity to provide their input. The questions that we ask them are what, what are this, in your opinion, what are the strengths of the district? The second question is what are the challenges you see over the next three to five years of the district? And again, it's three to five because it's a minimum three-year contract, a maximum five-year. Then we ask them what kind of qualities they'd like to see in the next superintendent and what kind of experience they'd like to see. And then if they had one question they could ask of all of the candidates, what would that be? I'm going to collate all of that material for you and, and give that back to you. So after I interview the candidates in that third and fourth to the, to the left, in those third and fourth categories or processes, I'll be able to provide you much more detailed information than if you go with the traditional search, which is, which is the second to the left. And although I will give you a good amount of information on each of those candidates because I'll go through every single application to make sure that all their certifications are there, their transcripts are there, resume, letters of recommendation, all of those things are in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You mentioned something that it might be more beneficial to do an interim for a month instead of rushing.
Well, you, it, Dr. Wanko will be here two years, and I, I don't know that any executive county superintendent has given a waiver on that. I'm not saying that it can't be done. I just don't know of anyone that that's happened with, any district that that's happened with. So you may need to appoint somebody for a month or two as an acting or as another interim. But we're, you know, I'm more certainly welcome to, you know, to go through this process and see what kind of a calendar. What would probably happen is your advertising period would be shorter because we're, you know, we're already late, running a little bit late. Not terribly, but a little bit.
Accelerated advertising. Anyone else?
I just have to find some relatives.
Excuse you?
I have to find some relatives so I can be conflicted.
I guess, I, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I had one more. You mentioned something that the conflicted trustees are allowed to ask questions about the process? They're allowed to know about the?
They're allowed to know about the process. You would, I, I would defer to your board attorney on this, but the conflicted trustees would, are not, according to the SEC, the School Ethics Commission, are not permitted to participate in the selection process of the consulting firm, nor are they allowed to participate in any part of the process moving forward or the selection of the new superintendent. And they can't vote on that appointment as well.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Now?
Right, yeah. The conflicted?
On the process?
Yes.
Yes. It's, what, board attorney? I'm sorry, I don't?
On the process alone, but it, it starts with, under the Martinez case that you're referring to, it starts with the hiring, the search company being involved in the hiring process after that and voting. Those are all allowed.
My question does not have anything to do with the process, with the search. It just has, it's not really a question, it's a comment. May I make a comment regarding, we have heard from three separate superintendent search organizations.
Firms.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
And all three have mentioned the very, very short timeframe that this board has limited itself to because we've waited so long.
That, that's a different comment.
Well, this is, may I make that comment? Because I feel that we have been characterized in a negative way, perhaps showing some degree of irresponsibility and not recognizing the importance. But we were under the impression, that's not really a great word, impression, but we thought, and, and, and it was based upon a very, very good thought, that perhaps we could keep our current superintendent for one more year. And I want to be corrected if I'm wrong. We were only apprised, perhaps maybe six weeks ago, we did write a letter asking for a waiver. How long ago was that? Do you remember? Well, I'm saying that we did not lack foresight here as a board. We did think that we'd be able to keep our interim for one more year. And we were only told at the last board meeting that that was not to be. And as a result, we do have a shortened timeframe, which we were not expecting. So it wasn't due to lack of foresight, was not due to being negligent, it was something that was basically forced upon us. And I don't like hearing that we didn't recognize the timeframe. We did believe that we would have our interim one more year. Thus, now, we were, we were denied, for whatever reasons, by the DOE. We were denied, and as a result, our timeframe has been shortened. I just wanted to make that clear. Not one member of this board was negligent or lacked foresight in this whole process. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
May I, may I, I just, I don't want you to misunderstand me.
No, I am not, Mary.
Okay. I'm, I'm not insinuating that the board has not acted appropriately or that they've not acted in a?
No, you have not. The two others have.
In a ti, in a, you know, a relative timeframe. These things happen. They happen for all kinds of reasons. And it is a tight schedule, starting in January. We would need to get together very quickly if you decided to go with New Jersey school boards. We need to get together very quickly with the non-conflicted members of the, of trustees to be able to put together that criteria so that we could advertise. I really do, because if, when you advertise in print in the store ledger, which is the education paper of the, of the state, you have online advertising for four weeks, for 30 days. So I like for that advertising window to be at least that 30 days, but we would just need to move quickly after that. It's not impossible, but if the board wants to take more time, then the only, the only drawback to that would be possibly appointing an interim for a month or two. And you can appoint interims on a month-to-month basis and continue through the process. So it's not the worst thing in the world for either the board or for, or for your community or for your students. It's just another option if it does, if we're not able to get it, the process done.
It's an agreement, if I understand, then what you're saying is that we can't come to an agreement, although I have nothing to say because I am conflicted. But if, if the non-conflicted members cannot come to an agreement, we can offer a month-to-month to our current interim?
No, I don't know that to be true. You would have to go through the executive county superintendent for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Because I don't know that to be true. But the other point to, to your point is that if you decide, if the, the non-conflicted trustees cannot come to a decision or don't feel that they have their selection in the first pool of candidates, we will re-advertise, I'm with you, until you get a new superintendent because I'm your field service rep. The only thing it might cost you is advertising, but you don't pay again for the process. Okay? The process is in place as it is until you have a selected superintendent.
May I present another option?
Sure.
An acting until?
That's why I said acting or an interim. Yes. Either one is possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. Have a good night. Safe home, everybody. The weather's a little weird outside.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our superintendent and I will, Mr. Freeman and I will finish on.
Okay. Thank you again.
Good evening, everyone. We had three excellent presentations, and I would just like to reaffirm that it is imperative that the board try to make a decision tonight on which firm they would like to use so that you can begin the process as quickly as possible. The past month, the central office has been working on various projects. We also conducted a district-wide leadership team meeting. Additionally, I sat in on the mid-year county budget review conducted by John Gomez, Executive County Business Administrator, Melissa Pierce, County Superintendent, and Educational Specialist, Monica Tone. They were most pleased with our overall progress on the budget. We also have updates from a variety of different areas, ranging from state reports, emissions, meetings, and projects, which Mr. Lopez will now share with you. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Wanko. Last week, members of our district safety team had a meeting with representatives from the city, county, and state for a state sheltering task force meeting. During the two-hour meeting, the group discussed all aspects of using a school as a shelter, as we have done in the past. Our employees who will be working shelters will be trained using the FEMA Emergency Management Institute and the state and county OEM, along with the Red Cross, will also provide training to our board event employees. Market calendars, we have the date set for our third annual Career and Job Expo. We are looking forward to another successful event on March 26th at 6:00 PM. That's March 26th at 6:00 PM in the Rich Court, the ice rink. Flyers have been created and we are currently working on signing employers and vendors up. We will also be sending this information, as we have done in the past, to our current seniors and our recent graduates. New for this year, the state is requiring that the 2017-18 district performance report is submitted via NJSMART. NJ DOE homeroom is no longer being used for this. Last week, all school and district data was entered, updated, and submitted with no errors to the NJSMART system. On February 19th, representatives from our district will be attending the Bias Incident Symposium run by the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office. That afternoon, we will also be meeting with the prosecutor's office as we will be the first school system in the county to partner with the prosecutor's office for a new anti-bullying program they have created for elementary school students. As you see in Resolution C6 tonight, every six months, school districts are required to report violence, vandalism, and bullying incidents to the board. I would like to congratulate our entire school community because in two, in just two short years, we have cut our incidents in half. In the 2016-17 school year, from September to December, we had 51 incidents. And this school year, during that same period, that number has decreased to 25 incidents. I would also like to thank the board for your support and the proactive initiatives we have put in place over the past two years. Wonderful job all around. Thank you, Dr. Wanko.
Any questions for Mr. Lopez? Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Curriculum item A1 refers to the naming of Midtown Community Schools. Dr. Dagnan will present an update on the process. Furthermore, as we plan for the 2019-2020 school year and begin our scheduling meeting with our high school students, it is important that we are with our high school students, it is important that we are clear with the direction with respect to advanced placement assignments, assessments. The curriculum committee began the discussion, and it has a recommendation for you this evening. Dr. Degnan will present the committee's findings at this time. Dr. Degnan?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko, and good evening, trustees. The Medal of Honor is the highest award for valor and action against an enemy force, which can be bestowed upon an individual serving in the armed forces of the United States. Only 3,500 recipients in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, and Coast Guard have been awarded this acknowledgement of extraordinary achievement in military service. The city of Bayonne has connections to the three Medal of Honor recipients. Stephen Gregg entered service at Bayonne, lived in Bayonne, and worked for Hudson County Sheriff's Office. Currently, he has a county park and street, Gregg Lane, which borders Nicholas Oresco School. Nicholas Oresco, born in Bayonne and entered service in Bayonne, currently named Public School 14. The district received a request from a member of the public to name Midtown Community School after our third Medal of Honor recipient, William Shemman. President Barack Obama awarded the Medal of Honor to William Shemman in 2015. William was previously overlooked for the nation's highest military award for valor. Shemman, who was Jewish, repeatedly exposed himself to enemy fire to rescue wounded troops during combat operations in France during World War I. After platoon leaders had become casualties, Shemman took command and displayed initiative under fire until he was wounded by shrapnel and a machine gun bullet. William Shemman was born in Bayonne, New Jersey, in 1896. He graduated from the New York State Ranger School in 1914, and went on to work as a forester in Bayonne. A discussion took place at the two BOA curriculum committee meetings, and the requested letter, board policy, and biography was shared with the full board. The resolution is now before you for a full discussion this evening, and as per Policy 7250, school and facility names, school buildings, and separate school facilities, both on school grounds and within school buildings, shall be named only by formal action of the Board of Education. In naming schools and facilities, the board shall strive to honor the traditions and high ideals of this district and the community it serves.
The packet I sent home yesterday, as you know, had all the background material. It also had the background resolution from, it was the naming of Oresco School, also with the board policy. So everything Dr. Degnan was talking about, hopefully everybody had a chance to look over, including the letter from the councilman. It is my understanding that Councilman Perez will be with us tonight at the public meeting, if anyone has any particular questions for him. It was sent online last night. About yesterday afternoon. Yeah, it was an attachment to, actually, the, the presentations from the three companies, and the first thing was the resolution, so, but I will get you a copy, because I have it.
One other thing on that, Dr. Maida, I, unless I was dreaming this, did I also read a letter from Mayor Davis regarding his feeling on, didn't Mayor Davis do the research and give a high recommendation to have this occur?
I believe that letter was from Councilmember at large Juan Perez.
It was from Juan Perez?
But it did come on the mayor's letterhead, so that's-
Oh, that's why I remember. It was on the mayor's letterhead, but, okay, it was from Councilman Perez.
It was signed by the council.
There was also a letter in the Jersey Journal and the Community News.
Okay, thank you.
From the council.
Thank you.
Perhaps Dr. Degnan will go over the AP committee results?
Yes, you know, there was a comment from the public with respect to the AP exams. It has to do with participation versus grades. We had a discussion in the curriculum committee. You know, presently, we pay $86 per exam. They're costly, and with some students taking several exams, the bill quickly adds up. We paid approximately $38,000 this year for the students to take the exams. We also provide the PSAT, which is a wonderful opportunity for our students, and that's 1,400 students. It costs about $20,000. There are, we had a wonderful conversation about it, but ultimately, what we recommend out of committee was that we require students to pay for AP exams and reimburse them if they maintain an average of at least 85 by the end of the third marking period. So we would have to let students know now that there's a change in our, our program of study. As they're signing for classes, they would have to pay upfront, and if they maintain that grade of 85 through three marking periods, then we would reimburse them.
Is that effective this school year?
No. No, this would be, we would be, we would have, we would-
The two would give you prior notes.
Correct. So there's, they would be selecting your schedules now, and that we would let them know as they come into the counselors. So some students may say, well, I want five AP exams. Well, you may even think a little bit more about what you want to really take.
And I was, that the, it was changed from second marking period to third marking period.
Well, at, at first, we were, we were discussing second, but most acceptances come later, like before March, so if we can hold them and keep them a little bit, like I said, they, they call it skin in the game, until the end, and we're apt to keep that 85 average before they take the test, especially in senior year.
All right, thank you.
One last comment, I know I talk a lot, but-
Yes.
I love you too. If a student does not have the 85, we're not saying he may not take the AP, we're just saying that the school will not pay for that student to take the AP.
Correct.
Right, okay.
What about students who can't front the money themselves? Their families are poor, they don't have that money.
Right, that's the recommendation.
But they would have to put the money up front first. What if they don't have to put the money up front?
Right, that's the recommendation from the committee.
So in other words, they're tough luck, they don't have-
They have to vote on it, it's a recommendation.
But I'm saying, that's the recommendation would have that effect.
It would, yes.
And if we voted no, then the recommendation was not going to affect, and the old one would stay in place.
Right, we currently pay for all, that's correct.
Dr. Degnan, does any other schools in Hudson County have that restriction? It's my understanding, every other school in Hudson County pays for the students to take their AP exam if they're enrolled in an AP course.
I don't know what to-
You're going to public school, you mean?
Yeah, every other, every public school does. I mean, this would be the only school that I know.
Did anybody do a study on that? Do we have, you know, definitive information about every other school in Hudson County? Are they allowing any student who takes an AP class, regardless of the yearly average, to take the AP? Or to Trustee Yunos's point, he did say, if he does, did we investigate that?
No.
Okay.
All right, we also have the option of favoring this to allow the time to do that research if you so wish, so the board can make that decision.
That's what I'm saying, this is in fact as of next year.
And, and another item you might want to look at is free or reduced criteria for lunch that might be applied to Trustee Ryan's suggestion about a person who might not be able to make the monetary-
I see, I see your point. At all, because if a person can't afford it, they can't afford it. If it reaches into their pocket, then they can't get a heads, they can't get a jump on, to behind.
So if they have an 83, they can't take the AP if they don't have the money to pay for it?
Well, this really seems like a finance committee thing more than a curriculum, Mr. President.
Well, actually, both, I guess, because one of the major policies-
So, so it already went through the curriculum committee? And now should go-
They discussed it, so, we could, I just, Dr. Wonko said, favor it, give it a little more time. I understand Trustee Ryan's back there. The only thing, the bad side of that is that we're telling anyone else, if they fail the test without paying for it, that those people, it'll be okay. So once again, it's, we want to be on the same plane, so, some sort of way, but-
You know, while I agree with Trustee Ryan, I mean, he's got a good point, you know, kid gets an 83, and, you know, maybe they will pass the test, we don't know, you know? I mean, some colleges do accept threes, most would need fours and fives, but some do accept three on the AP exam. My point that I'm making is like, you know, an 83, maybe it's a really hard subject. I mean, you know, I don't know if I can get an 83 in, you know, AP Calculus, you know, at this point in my life, you know, where, I mean, it, it's, it's a difficult subject content. And, you know, perhaps, maybe they had it off, you know, marking period, maybe they're, you know, they're just short of that 85 criteria, but maybe they will be successful on the test, and you're right, maybe they can't pay for it. I'm very not comfortable with this.
How about if we discuss the idea of the teacher recommendation? I mean, if we're saying, somebody got an 82, but they're doing a very difficult class, and teacher says, well, you know, he had some problems early on, he's coming on great, this and that, I'm sure she's doing well, you know, that's why you have the teachers there to make these sometimes, these decisions, as opposed to maybe the person that was doing okay, and they just found out they got into such and such school, and they haven't done homework for the last week and a half.
Would, would it be acceptable to everyone if we throw it back to the committee with these comments that the board has made, and then they can do a review?
Well, I, I mean, for me-
The only, the only problem is we're under a timeline here as well, because we want students to sign up for the course, knowing what the rules are when you sign up.
Right.
That's why it is now that they need to say, well, I'll take five AP exams, I don't care, doesn't cost me any money.
Right. But I mean, how much money, in, in, in your research, and Dr. Degnan, I don't know if this is possible, in your research, did you also figure out, how much money is this really going to save this board, where, you know, where we feel the need to do this, you know, like as far as, you know, in an estimate of how much it would save a year, where this is an issue?
No, it is $86 a test. I could tell you, last year, we had, give me one second.
You said that.
Yeah, I think I set that up.
$38,000 last year.
Yeah, how much?
$38,000.
$38,000.
And the year before, it was like 22, and then the year before, it was like maybe 19.
Right, but I'm saying- So we had 222 students taking 454 AP exams at a cost of $38,886.
Also, I thought, at one point, when it was just people taking it on their own, the number of people passing was much higher than when we started recruiting after everybody.
Right, when we started, we had 129 AP students taking 278 exams. You know, the passing percentage was 62%, and that was in 2014. We're down at 57% passing, and we have 454 exams. So, you know, the question is, what, what does this board want? Participation or scores? Because if the students decide that they have to pay, and they have more skin in the game, then you're going to see a higher score, because somebody's going to go and say, you know, this is the course that I want to take. If you want participation, again, you know, we can, we can, you know, look into the budget, I can look at the Title IV allotment through the SFFETO grant, and we can look at that, that's not a problem. But then you're saying participation's important, and the scores may be lower.
And correlation between getting 85 and above, and passing, and getting passing?
Getting a three, four, or five.
Yes. What is the correlation with that?
So, I did a little research, Florida, who covers the cost of any exam fee, has one of the worst pass rates. That's just something that, what I looked at. You know, many school districts require students to pay. Doing well on exam greatly benefits students and parents, receiving college credit, and students who pay a portion of the exam fee are more invested in outcome, and therefore work harder in doing well on the exam. I mean, there are many different models.
I think we could read-
This came to committee because there was a question from the public, and that's why I was thinking about that.
It's kind of like we're waiting for the poll test, when students do, they needed it to graduate, as opposed to just taking a test.
Well, that's another point.
Percentage on the test, and the percentage in class, and the percentage on the score. It's still my same question, that I didn't answer yet.
I can't, I can't hear you though.
I didn't hear it.
What is the correlation between students receiving 85% passing in the class, in an AP class, and passing the test? So they pass the class with 85?
So I, I don't have it by grade, because you're looking at 424. If I have to run it by grade, I could do that, but I don't have that. But not by, by, if I need 85 at the third marking period, I have to go back and look at all 454 students, what they got, and I could run that.
Dr. Degnan, one question on that. Does that impact CUSAC, our CUSAC rating at all?
No, it's a performance report question. It's a performance report question.
So it doesn't really carry a, a great deal of weight in our CUSAC rate?
It's a, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Degnan? As I mentioned in my opening, the business office held the mid-year budget review with the county. Also, the accounting firm, Overlook and Morrison are here tonight, and will give a review based on their findings for the internal audit that has been completed. Additionally, the repair and transportation department has been proactive in conducting a sanitation program to combat flu and virus season across the district. We started putting up the public service messages on the Ben TV station as well. I also posted it on our social media and the website. Mr. Figu will update everyone now on these topics. Mr. Figu?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. Good evening, everyone. First, before I give my review, just want to welcome Mr. Burnside, who was our, our new accountant. As Dr. Wonko mentioned, the business office held its mid-year budget review. The agenda included our current budget status, enrollment discussions, facilities, and curriculum instruction. It was a great meeting, we had positive feedback from the county. Along with the mid-year budget review, the accounting firm of Hodgeley Morrison presented the finance committee with their audit findings. The great news is, there are no repeat recommendations. Mr. Morrison and Mr. Costello will be presenting their findings tonight to the entire board. Our repair, transportation, maintenance department's completing its sanitizing program. This program entails a maintenance crew completing extra extensive cleaning on desktops, counters, doorknobs, and other common areas. This has proven to make control of flu and virus breakouts, and the program was introduced last year and has been a great success. Finally, in the next few weeks, my office will be meeting with budget managers, which are principals and directors, to begin the preparation of the 2019-2020 school budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figu. I would like to remind you that on February 5th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, the Bayonne Public Schools Social Studies Department, in conjunction with the Bayonne Public Library, and with your support, will be hosting a showing of Fair Game Surviving a 1960 Georgia lynching. This intense portrayal of Jim Crow America tells the story of a Bayonne resident and a Navy veteran, James Flair, and the heroic efforts of his mother and others to save him from death row. The acclaimed filmmaker of Fair Game, Glennon L. King, will join the moviegoers for discussion and a question and answer session following the screening. Hopefully, you can attend.
What time again?
7:00 PM on the 5th at the Bayonne Public Library. That concludes my report. Are there any questions? Seeing no hands, I turn the meeting back to Dr. Maida. Okay. If everybody's ready, we'll start with our agenda items. As for communications, I just point out the last two. I believe everything else you've seen, I've sent to you. I know Mr. D'Amico's, we've been, he's, he's requested that we include his complete running email, start to finish, so we put that in, and I was, it's a little confusing, because it's half board vacancy, half resolution A1. So I've included all of it. And the other addition is Anthony Weimer, who wrote a, a letter in regard to the Assistant Supervisor's Special Services position. So do I have two trustees that would like to move in second? Communication?
I'll move.
I'm second.
Seconded by trustee Willback. Just as a point of reference, I never open trustee mail. Trustees Valarda and Munoz, I gave you the copy of the school ethic, from the School Ethics Commission, in regards to the letter that we have in communications. So I gave you their response. I leave that up to the two of you to share, if you would like, with the rest of the board. Commendations, we have one this evening, the poppy poster contest, and the student will be with us tonight. All right, I'll go over the consent agenda, starting with curriculum. Curriculum meeting was held, all the items in front of you were discussed, you have everything, from my original presentation, from Friday's package. The only thing you did not have was Resolution A1, which Dr. Degnan explained to you, and that's the actual resolution for the renaming of Midtown Community School. The board just basically has to give me some idea of what you would like me to do. Do you plan on leaving it on consent? Would you like me to move it to non-consent? Any discussion, I believe, has to be out here. There's really nothing that covers us for enclosed session, so just, if somebody could give me an idea of what you want me to do?
We could discuss it now, I guess.
Yep. Yep, if you want to do a, a poll of the board, and if we have enough votes. If not, I'll move it to non- it to non-consent, if we don't have enough votes, I'll table.
Glad to do that.
I think it would be great if we just leave it on consent.
I'll start on myself, I'll be glad to endorse it, so.
One. Carol?
That's fine.
Two. Chuck?
I'm in favor of it.
Three. Four.
Yes.
Yes. Five. Six.
Can I make a proposal to the amendment? Can we rename it William M., was it M?, excuse me, William M.? William M. Shemmen Midtown Community School, and keep Midtown in the name as well as honoring the gentleman? Because I think that when we did Aresco, Aresco was school number fourteen for about a year, right, a year and a half, they didn't have a name associated to the building. Midtown Community Schools had twenty-six years of Midtown Community School, they just celebrated their twenty-fifth, it's an identity. There's M's all over the building, right, they have new cheerleading uniforms they just purchased for ten thousand dollars that say Midtown across it. They're the Midtown Bears, they've been the Midtown Bears for a quarter of a century, so I think that if we were to keep Midtown in the name while still honoring Mr. Shemmen, I think that would be a good idea and an ice compromise for the school.
Let me do this again, I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Yes, so do I.
Can I make a comment regarding trustee Munoz? I think you all know that I was the one who wrote the letter to name the auditorium for Alexandria X. O'Connor. I also was the one who wrote the letter to name the stadium for Mr. Don Ahern, but if you remember, at that time, we did exactly the same thing. It was Ahern Veterans Memorial Stadium, because it was Veteran Stadium.
Right.
So it seemed to fit.
Anyone have a problem with that?
No.
Mike, we didn't get to you. You're the only one that-
Wait, so we're doing the William Shemmen Midtown Community School?
Yeah, that's fine.
He didn't have a middle initial, so we-
Oh, I don't know where I got M. from, I apologize. Maybe that's why I don't know.
We're making M.
The M was for Midtown.
Yeah, sorry.
The M was for Midtown. I will, I will make a correction on the resolution, but I don't have time to do that right now, so.
That's fine.
So that completes the curriculum, and I'll leave that on consent. I'll move to finance. If everybody can turn to your finance resolutions, B1.
Doc, we didn't have a move in second then.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to do it, it borrows the whole.
I'll tell you who that is.
It's Doc.
Trustee Cassius was the second.
Valado first.
That's, we just got handwriting like me, so that's for him. So trustee Valado moved the agenda, and trustee Cassius was the second at the committee meeting on all the resolutions.
You thought that first? Okay, thank you.
And I mean, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to delay this anymore, but I just want to ask a question too, just because, to satisfy my curiosity. How did the naming of number eight end up in curriculum? And I only ask that because, again, it seems like it would be more of a facilities issue, a policy. Again, I just wanted to know.
I was actually asked that on an email from a member of the public. Basically, it had, we put it there because it was based on the policy, and since it's a name, the naming of the school is a policy situation, we thought it would go to curriculum. But no, you're right, it could have gone to facilities, but as, as anything, it all winds up here anyway.
Right.
So even though finance-
I was just wondering, like, how did that end up, like, over there?
Because it has always been an issue of the policy of naming something.
Plus we have a social-
Cool, I just wanted to know.
A member of the public, in his email, was using the example, when trustee Alonso first came on, he had a couple of his own resolutions about naming. Basically, he just proposed those himself, so it really didn't go to committee. But the reason it went to curriculum, it was a policy issue based on the policy of the naming of the school.
Okay, thank you.
We never meant to leave anybody out, since we knew eventually it would get here. Okay, so finance, finance committee met. B1 money received was done at committee, acceptance of required reports. Liz sent, sent you that package in an email. Claims and accounts was in a draft, this is our final copy. B4, 5, and 6 were done at committee. I'll ask you to turn to B7. B7 is emergency transportation contract that we are responsible for, and that is new. And then B8, back in, let's see, it was November twenty-seventh, we had bids for masonry repair and lintel replacement. If I could ask you to turn to that resolution, B8, and you'll understand why it took us so long to get to you. You'll see a list of all the vendors, from low bid to high bid. I don't have to explain to you the difference in those numbers. So obviously, the low bid, our professionals had a big question on whether or not they could do the job for that number. So that's why it's taken this long to get to you. And thank you to Mitch and Mr. Pacina and Mr. Fugu's office for putting this all together, but we've decided that RVT, which is the low bid by a lot, is able to do the job. So that's that. Next up, if you remember, we had gone out on a bid for telecommunications, it was rejected, and we asked to rebid. We had two bidders, and you could see, one came in at a hundred and fifteen dollars, and obviously, the low bid was seventy-five, and the finance committee decided to award to the low bid. Okay, so that completes-
Dr. Maida, just in regard to, did we approve field trips yet?
Field trips are in the next category, personnel.
Oh, all right, I'm jumping ahead, okay.
Okay. Now, the finance agenda was moved by trustee Alonso, and it was seconded by trustee Ryan, so everybody knows. Okay, now we'll get to personnel. There've been some revisions, we'll take them one at a time. C1 is for inside. Community Ed had some minor changes from committee. What you have in front of you is the final copy. Just as a reminder, trustee Finerty was the most moved, and vice president Willback seconded the personnel agenda. So on community ed, if there's no questions, just some minor changes. Same thing with C3, the resolution has changed since the committee. You'll see the final resolution, you all have, and that's resolution C3. C4, various positions, there's a need in the district for food service, so that's why this has changed, and you'll see the new copy in front of you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Copaz. We have our harassment, intimidation, and bullying, it is the quarterly report. I'm sorry, before I do that, I left out, C5 was home instruction, that did not change. I'm sorry. Now C6, Mr. Copaz.
Dr. Maida, before, I spoke about incidents that we have for violence, vandalism, and bullying. Again, we did go down from fifty-one incidents two years ago, from September to December. This year, we had twenty-five, so we cut those in half.
So we take those monthly reports, we collate them into a quarterly report, which we do with the state, so that's that. The monthly, we'll wait on that, you know, I'll wait till we get to this. The monthly moved to non-consent, that's why you don't see it in front of you. Trustee Finerty, C7 and C8 are both field trips.
Yes, I have a question with C7, I thought there was an additional advisor.
Uh, let's see.
Mr. Copaz, I thought there were two females going with two males. I think somebody's been left off, is what I'm saying.
Okay, I'll make a phone call, so if you break, and I get the name, and we can make that addition.
Doc, right, because I know it has to be done tonight.
Yeah, make the phone call.
And this is, okay, thank you.
Good, so we'll check that, and we have to, we'll make the addition, thank you. Okay, that brings us, C16 is inside, C18 is inside, actually nineteen, twenty, twenty-one are all inside. If you return to resolution D1, this is our monthly harassment, intimidating, and bullying report. Normally, it's on consent, but Mr. Copaz will explain. Out here, or do we need to?
No, it's just going to be non-consent. In accordance with the Bayonne Board of Education Policy 5512, during this reporting period, eight incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying have been reported and investigated at the following schools. One incident at Mary J. Dunyan School, and two incidents at Harvest Man have been investigated and confirmed. Strategies and resources have been provided to the victims to assist in recovery process, consequences and remedial measures were given to the offenders. All documentation is being retained by the anti-bullying coordinator. Our five remaining incidents, one incident at Henry Harris School, one incident at Harvest Man, one incident at Washington, one incident at Aresco, and one incident at Bayonne High School. In these five cases, there was no confirmed evidence of the investigated acts of HIV. Strategies, resources, and remedial measures were implemented. All documentation is being retained by the school anti-bullying coordinator.
Do I have two trustees that would like to move and second that item?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Trustee Cruden and trustee Valado. Trustees, I have one more addition, D2, but it'll be for inside. Superintendent, anything else for outside?
Nothing.
Okay, at this time, we're going to turn-
Can I ask a question?
Carol, what?
No.
Go ahead.
I guess what I'm, why are baseball caps for-
Carol Cruden's here, question.
Why does the baseball cap cost thirty-one dollars?
Good material.
That's a good quality cap.
It's not a lot of money.
Let's check it out.
For one hat?
I think you'd be white, and you got a New York Yankee hat, I guess the kids call them fitted now.
Yeah.
I think they're probably about thirty-five, forty dollars.
Yeah, if it's a fitted hat.
It's not a snapback, it's a fitted hat. It's a more expensive thing.
Do they need a fitted hat?
I believe probably all varsity teams in the state of New Jersey-
It's a common, so it's common.
Yeah.
Okay. You don't want them show, showing up looking second class.
No, because the snapbacks actually pop off when they're in the running, the snapbacks. They pop off easier, that's why they have the fittings now.
Well, we got one last thing, maybe trustee Finerty could talk to trustee Cruden about the excessive questions.
So at this time, we're going to turn to a closed session for legal personnel negotiation items, it is six thirty-two, the board will return.